Hello hello uh I hope I am was facing some issues I think audio issues. I think now it should be fine. Hmm hmm. Hey Mahir. Uh. Thank you so much. Now did you watch like which stream did you watch? Uh. Glad people are liking it. I didn't think so that most people would like it but still. Yeah. Cool. So earlier I used to do DSA now I think I have been doing doing DSA for long time. Um it's it's getting boring. So I am going to start now low level things. So I am I got a lot of questions around low level also. I had a video up. But I want to share what how I prepared and what kind of thing that I use if I have to revise right? I am not I am not revising as of now. I am good with my. Oh really? That's really great to hear. Uh Mahir thank you so much. It kind of motivates me but the only aim is just to motivate people out there and uh. Also to solve questions right? But I have solved so many questions on lead code that now sometimes it feels really boring. So now I am going to move to LLD for some days and then HLD and then again we will come back to lead code. And also one more thing I have noticed with lead code is right that if I am solving easy problems like seventeen hundred, eighteen hundred, nineteen hundred rated right? Um that I am able to do but uh if if I solve harder problems right? Then I need more concentration. So I am not able to reply or I am not able to talk through. Which I want to do. I want to talk to the people who are who are watching or who have any questions right? I want to do that more. But with DSA if you are solving hard question right or if you are solving question that you have not solved before then you need more focus. So that's why I thought that okay I'll take a break from DSA. And um I'll be doing this but I'll be doing that offline. So not not on a live stream. Probably I'll do that also. Um I change my things very soon. But yeah so this is something that I prepared when I was giving interviews. Last year I was giving interviews. But this year I have not given any interview and not planning to give also for at least two two three years now. Um. So this is how LLD LLD interviews are very open ended right? So LLD interviews are generally it depends on your interviewer. You could get a class diagram also or you could get a code code also right? In some companies uh like in Uber itself uh depending on your interview. Either they call it in Uber it's called uh. I'll reply to your question Mahir uh in a minute. So whatever saying is that in companies like Uber uh it's called specialization round. Uh machine machine specialization. Specialization is there. I think in my interview video that I have created for Uber a depth specialization. It's depth. A machine coding is in Uber. They both are allowed around LLD. Now in Uber how it is like in Uber um depending on the interview you could get a class diagram. Like extensive class diagram not simple as snake and ladder. It should it should have relationships. I think I was doing that in book my show in one of the streams earlier. So let's open that. Yeah this thing right? So this is also very basic one. There are a lot of things missing. Cheats and whatnot right? And all the seed stuff is missing. Lot of things are missing in this and relationships are also missing. So those side of things that might be comment otherwise you could get code part of it right where let's say how would you? Show the uh movies or how would you show the theater part of it right? Those kind of things could come. So for example let's say search a movie. How are you going to search a movie or which movie you are going to show to the user right? That sort of thing. So that snippet they might ask you to write. So it revolves around that. Uh I I started this series long back. I think two months back. But I I only did these two because I I kind of got bored of this also. But now I want to do it again. So I have no idea. I have like lost touch on LLD. Uh because I don't rel- use Java daily uh for LLD perspective right? So I'll be revising through hoops concepts, UML, solid principles and whatnot. So um okay that's 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 what I will be doing if someone is new to the stream. And uh if they have to know who I am, so this is my intro and also I'll be sharing this. So I have this Bento created. So I have my links here. You can see those links and I'll. I'll copy paste this also if anyone is interested because I get that question sometimes in the stream who am I right? So I'll copy that and I'll pin that and uh. Now I'll answer the question that Mira has right. See everyone has a different journey Mahir. I I think you might have heard this thing lot from. And I do think I don't know which call year or which you whether you are working or which life stage you are at. But yeah G-Soc you should uh do try to do right. And uh but that like I came to know G-Soc when I was in fourth year I was already placed. At that time I got to know about G-Soc. So that was like really late for me to do that. But it's not end of the world in the end. That's what I've seen right? Even now I work at a really good company. Uh but once you achieve that right uh it's not. It's like you still feel okay right? It's not nothing crazy. Even if you have cracked it or if you have not cracked it, it's it's part of life. So I don't think you should feel bad. You should never get demotivated. Uh as long as you are putting in your effort, things are going to happen for you right? Just the only thing is that don't stop putting effort. Take breaks. It should not be like that you are doing crazy like ten hours every day, six hours every day right? Take breaks. Uh taking break is really important. Uh. So but don't feel demotivated right down the line. I'll give you one example right? So even if you are in college right, let's say you are at you are. At four year stage right? Four year if you are in from India that your college might be a four year right your degree. Then ideally everyone I have seen most of the people my managers in previous companies and fellow managers and all those right? Everyone kind of worked for twenty thirty years in software engineering world right? So one year, two year here then there and it's not even going to matter down the line right? So let's say today some of your friends are working in Google, Microsoft, Amazon right? And you are working at a startup or some other company. Down the line one year after that it's like. It's like. It's like that uh. After one year you will feel like that okay things a lot of things might change right? Down here maybe after five years you might have your own startup and some might be in the same company right? So things change a lot and very soon also as long as you keep putting efforts. So my first year is about to and you are really at a good stage I would say. The one tip I'll give you. Try to get internship as a really good company off campus. I have seen people cracking off campus. So you see your first year is going to end. Your second year is going to start. Okay? Now. Uh for your second year right? What I have seen people is that once their second year end. They get an internship offer like two three months generally from Google I have seen right? So that is off campus. So for that what you need to do is always look out at career portals of all these websites. Now when you look at these career portals right? What you will see is that there are openings and one more thing that just I'll break the horizon here that. You might get a onsite offer also like for example you might get a offer to do an internship in US. Right? And they will the companies will sponsor that. I have seen that happening like it's a very rare case scenario but in your hands what it is you can just apply right? So always look out. So you have one year. So your second year is going to start. If I were you what I would do right? I would keep my uh DSA solid. I would practice DSA and also look out for all the jobs on the career portal like Meta, Google, Airbnb, all the companies out there. Whenever you use any app, think of it that you want to do internship at there like for example Razorpay in India. Yesterday I saw a post that uh which startup is there in India. Some startup they were also looking for uh Swiggy. Yeah I saw a a post from LinkedIn sorry on LinkedIn from a Swiggy barter that they are aiming for internship. Now these sort of companies right that don't have any uh strong rules. That okay we are going to hire from this 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 right? Off campus you keep on applying right? So that is what I would suggest to you. So you are in second year. Do DSA and then when you build projects right? Try to leverage AI around your projects. So Langson is one of the framework uh just like there is spring boot and things for API things right Java. So Langston is pretty good nowadays. So build your projects around AI so that you get that experience also. So development experience right but never leave DSA. So in end of your second year aim for that aim for internship one like I think two two. Two or three weeks back only on LinkedIn I saw someone uh had had done internship from Google. After their second year ended right? That's that's how that's the reason I am saying this to you. So Aditya hi I am currently finished my second year. My goal now is to get a good internships should I be studying? I don't think Aditya system design would be asked to you. Uh I think mostly it should be DSA. Uh general knowledge around CS fundamentals, CS fundamentals should be there like for example operating system, DBMS. Some basics equal queries right? I think four subjects are. The four subjects. Um uh DSA DSA as in like subject wise right? And then operating system, DBMS. And networking right? These are like the core subjects of computer science. If you want to get like a software in. Internship right? So these should be solid and um then now you are in third year right? First thing that I would do if I was you is that every day. Look out at career portals. Look out for internship at all the companies like Airbnb, LinkedIn, Microsoft. All the companies ask for referral. Uh not sure if for internship someone can give referral. Um if you find any opening you can ping me also. Right and all that. So uh. That is one thing. So look out. So you you are at a stage where you have to now start applying. Because once your third year ends. Third year ends you will have a summer break. Uh in that summer break it would be really good that if you already are doing at an internship generally in campus also companies come but uh. Uh that generally happens in the starting of third year. So you might be getting companies if you are in good college. Like my college used to have that but I didn't know that so I could not get any offer. I think for internship you can't refer also like back in uh. See don't get stuck also. In one of my videos I have said that if there are two to three openings right? Apply directly to one or even two right? And then ask referrer for the third. Now for internship I don't think these many openings will be there. Only one opening will be there. So I would say that directly apply if you are getting referral within that day then wait but don't wait for couple of days right? Then you anywhere lose your chance. So that is what I would suggest. Yeah but I have to be good at development and then integrate journey and stuff into it right? I have to be really good at what I am doing to crack. Yes yes you have to be good but don't think that you have to achieve a lot. I'll I'll give you an example. So when I was in college right I used to think that okay I have to get um like I have to get a very good rating on lead code. Probably two thousand was something that I always aimed for. But I don't think that is necessary. I have my friends work at various companies those who have not given a lead code contest at all right? It doesn't really matter like at good companies I am not saying at Google. Google also it's like seventeen hundred, eighteen hundred rating is good enough because at that time you know graph and all that things right? So it is good to aim for perfection but you should not wait for perfection. I have waited a lot. I was like always undermining my work. So never do that. One more thing I'll say that try it now. Try it today. If you fail, try it again after six months right? That's why all the companies have their uh. Cool down period. That's the use of the cooldown period. If you if you are not able to clear it, try it again after sometime right? DSA contest sorry lead code can contest are something that you should always give. Even I gave it today. I have stopped giving a couple of minutes back but I used to give it a lot. Cool I'll not uh. So now I'll just start doing some work also right on then but feel free to ask some questions uh. If anyone has anyone has any questions or any doubts. I'll reply to them. But don't think like that Mahir. I think you are it's just a bad day for you. You are kind of demotivated but don't think like that. Don't think like that you are not good enough. I think everyone is good enough. So everyone just starts from some start. Um bloodbath can you please share this? This X Kelly link uh is in my. There is no link for that actually. This is in my VS code but what I will do is I'll prepare a separate X gully and then I'll share it right? Um this this like four, one, two, three and four. And this is also not very extensive just F five Y right? Because the thing is that you see I only have put some design patterns here right? And also this language is something that uh I might only be able to understand some way right? But I'll clean it out and I'll share it in the chat. Um. I can create a post on YouTube so I'll 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 attach this link there. I'll 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 put it and I'll make a note of it and I'll do that. Cool. Okay so now I'll not be replying for close to twenty minutes. I'll let me start a promo. Uh. Cool. Okay so in LLD interviews right so generally it is like low level design of things. Once you have identified what will be your identities of the class. Or a system that's where LLD comes into picture right? So. First things first right for example for principles. So there are some oops principles or standards or. Paradigm whatever we can call it that that are generally used. Uh while designing a system right? Because nowadays lot of systems are there. So it's like using the information that all the other engineers are already calculated. Yeah I'll clean it clean it little bit and then share it. Hmm. Just like LLD right I also have the same thing for HLD and DSA and hiring barrier rounds all of these round. But I'll just clean it bit and then we'll share it. Cool. Okay so these are all the system encapsulation bundles the data and methods into single unit. And to stick with access to some of the objects to protect the so basically the idea of encapsulation is that. If if we expose all the objects or all the data right then when the system gets big. Some other component can change the state of some other component right in in some function that state change might happen. That is why encapsulate the data we hide the data. Encapsulation is basically hiding of some of the data. So for example to implement this what we use is we use uh private getters and setters. Private properties of class. Class has methods and properties. So here what we do is we use private uh. Properties and then we create getters and setters of that so that their properties can't be changed directly from any class. Only you should be able to call their getters and setters. And it bundles the data and methods into single unit like related items into single unit. Makes sense. So that is encapsulation. Uh inheritance allows one subclass to inherit the properties and methods from another class. Let's say there is a class, big class and then it needs some property. Of. That and then you also need some of other things. For example, very basic example, you have a car class. It has lot of things and then. You can create Mercedes or BMW and all this with some of the properties right? Abstraction hides the complex implementation and so is only internal features. So some of the things can be private and rest can be public right? Uh polyformism yeah so basically one method. Just like uh example for this would be like a shape, shape as area it could be used. In in rectangle that area would work differently but in square or circle that area would work differently right? That's the example of volume morphism. Let's let's try to make this. As I am starting from scratch now I'll be talking a very basic stuff for some time. So if anyone is watching getting bored. Please please feel free to ignore as well right? Hmm. I have to. Mission. Class student. And in this. Student will have a name. And by making this private you can't just change it from its object. Right? So now I'll create getters and setters which automatically this will do. Get name. Get name. And uh. Now public. Add equal admin. Mingles. Um. Student student is equal to new student. And student dot set name. Equal to. And then. Um. Balance to. Get name. If I do. Be. ABC this won't work because this is private. This is just the use of encapsulation. So this is basic stuff. This is like basic encapsulation uh. Now let's say. We want to do the second thing was inheritance right? So this is again very basic example that you have class animal. And uh. Your animal will make sound. Right or you can also have car and car will be of different types. Right? And uh let's use class animal. And uh that makes. Sound. And dot output print line uh. Sound thing I don't know even if even that is a word. Plus then there is. Cat. And the cat will extend animal. Then void. Last cat extends animal it so it will always have access to this sound. But other than sound it can do some other things also. Uh in this let's say. That says. Meow system dot out dot print line meow. So. Now if I create. A cat. Uh cat. That is equal to new. Cat. Cat can. Cat can make sound also and cat can make meow also and I think we could overwrite that also. Let's run it. Cool this is basic. Basic inheritance stuff. Right. This is just used to so that there is no code application and. Better generalization right I think. We might have used this uh in this like for example this vehicle so we have a vehicle. And then from this vehicle we can have a car we can have a bike. And all of these right and where is the diagram for this. Yeah this this intelligence Kelly extension is really good. Kind of you don't have to switch between tabs right. But this is the inheritance and which type of relationship it is. Vehicle is uh so is our relationship. These kind of things are important. So vehicle is a bike car is a generalization is a truck right. So you might sometimes get brownie point for these kind of things if you remember well. Uh. Okay. So. Okay. The animal is there. And uh. Uh the third one that we were reading about is. Abstraction and then polymorphism right. Now for abstraction right so basically we will extract. Express the. Logic outside of the code right we don't really care so this is. Mostly used in payment I have seen like for example I might have also implemented it is there it is there in book my show. No so let's implement it right so first we will create some interface. Let's say we have a. Interface payment right. And uh and say that void. A and double amount right. Now different classes can have their own implementation of this pay. If it is a credit card payment if it is a UPI payment or whatever right. So. Class. Credit. Card payment. 임은스 payment. Uh. And we will override that function right override. Over it should automatically come would pay yeah. And here we can say that this payment is done via credit card. Paid via. Credit. Or you could have. Cash payment. 임은스 payment. Over right. A. Double amount. Need your cash. So now one way of using this I'll not create more payment function because idea remains the same. Right uh payment abstraction. Because the idea same now naive way right would be uh payment. P one is equal to new. Cash payment. Let's say. Let's not call this also let's use good names for this also payment. Card pay. And this. Cash pay right. And uh. Some system dot old dot is already there. Card pay dot pay. And right and then. Cash pay I'm not using that amount there which I know that can also be added. But yeah. So this cash pay and card pay is there right. Now this card pay when you create right this doesn't care what this how this pay is implemented like this payment. This this thing doesn't care. How you implement this pain this rated just abstract that logic out. This is one way of doing this but can be improved further also so there is just like. There are lot of design patterns there is factory design pattern. Which is very much suitable here because the thing is that when you will be creating this thing. Your code will change a lot so for example. Uh if you are already creating this somewhere and you want to create a new UPI payment then you'll have to change this part there right. But instead of that you can change this code in your API layer. Uh where you will just. Add one more thing here and then you'll pass it as a variable as of now this is not a variable right this can't be any runtime variable right this is a proper code. So factory pattern it is that it can uh. Change that on our runtime right so. Uh basically my aim was to go to factory button. After that like in some of the website the factory pattern the example that is given is that is. And I have not used factory button here also is not there. We can take a look in there is a website called design gurus if uh. People are not aware of it. So design gurus I think it is called design gurus. Or design patterns. Refactoring guru. That's a really good website but the the way the patterns are explained are like a very. Uh detailed also but. It's like from a very production kind of a level view so if you are first time looking at it you will not be able to understand. How would you really use it right. So that's where like you can say slightly easier version of. The factory pattern let's implement that so this is like normal. But if we have to create a payment factory. Right. So what we would do is on top of this we'll say that class. Payment factory. Public. I take payment this will give us payment and then get payment. Method. Now this type could be supplied to during the runtime. Which. Or we could just say that you can say case. Uh. Card. It on new credit card payment. Is cash. New cash payment. Uh. Default here you could either throw exception. But for now I'll just say that or let's throw a see if I have to throw new. Illegal argument option not supported. You can do better naming convention but yeah. Uh. Now instead of doing this right. What we can do is payment. Payment is equal to. Uh this payment factory. Now this uh this is a static function so it can be directly used on its class right you don't have to create object. Get payment method and here let's say I put cash right. So payment dot pay. Hundred so this should be paid via cash. Now down the line let's say there is a new way let someone chooses uh. Now for example let's say I am user one and there is user two right. So user one passed UI passed some uh environment variable saying that okay I need a cash. In the backend if we have to create this payment object we can use. Uh this ENV right but if we have to go this way then we'll have to use this if else right like if it is cash. But now we can just use this but here this could be some variable that we would be reading right. So that is the idea that's what how I like to think of it I might like this there might be different ways also but this is one of the way. I'll take a look at so yeah I've already spent four minutes so let's just quickly wrap up uh only for the. Which one is left polymorph isn't right that's relatively all of these are easy ones you've done it. Or long all of these are comparatively easy. But let's just quickly code. Uh inheritance polymorphism as well. Poly as the name suggests right it is used when you same form can have different values right so if there is a shape. Right. That shape could be. It could behave differently based on the argument and also it is of two types if I remember it correctly. One is like uh overloading and the other is overriding right overriding we have just done it here. So that if you call this cash movement this will behave in different way this if you call this one then it will behave in this way right this is overriding. And overloading is like you have the same but you be based on the parameters that you're passing right. Uh. All these are these comes handy when we are designing actual systems so my plan is to design practice different different systems. So this will come in handy that once we have learned it right. So this is one form of polymorphism the one that we have already implemented. Now uh the another implementation that I want to use is uh. Poly. More phison overloading right let's say. We have a class logger. And logs can be of different types right so for for example first log is there. You can just type in your message right system dot out dot print talent. Uh log. Message. This is one but based on the argument. Let's say message and there is some. Code as well. Here you are implementing intel and. Log. Plus message. Plus code right. So this becomes a different now. This log has different forms but basically you have implemented polymorphism. So now here if I create logger. Log system. Now let's call it actually this is how you would follow in some application also and I have say log one. Just log. Logar. Uh. What do you call is like let's say moved logger. Is equal to logger or um. Logar with code. Is. Or not even not 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 I'm not one second this is a the logger will not be like this. Logar logger is equal to new logger. Uh. And then you can log message differently or you can just say this is just message. Uh logger dot. Log. Message. And code so automatically it adjusted based on the arguments. That is how polymorphism works right all of these are kind of. The standards that are kind of helpful. Cool I think. We are good on time as well. I'll now take a look at chat if anyone has any questions. Uh do you think blockchain will boom in future I have no idea man. No idea. What do you guys think will it boom. take a short break uh if anyone has any questions please feel free to ask uh then I'll resume move to the next topic which is I think relationships what is next yeah relationships so when we are designing the class diagram this is kind of helpful association aggregation where one class uses another class cool uh let's get started I mean so you wanted to discuss U M L relationships right the next thing uh U M L relationships so this kind of helps us in giving clarity to the design there are different right uses are has a and um it's like an U M L diagram like modeling languages diagram right and object oriented systems there there could be different class relationship generally this is a relationship between couple of classes right two classes so this this kind of helps in uh in interviews as well or and also in general whenever you are designing a system so uh first one is association right where one class where one class uses or interacts with another class right just a relationship is there in between these two right now there could be a reference so if you have to take an example of uh let's say there is a in a in a school management system there would be a library and so there would be a school right to school uh let let me take an example of parking lot I think in this I might have a user relationship or in um my show is there a user relationship yeah movie uses you right so in movie class there will be a show or show will have a movie right so if this is the movie and where is show show has the movie ID right it uses that and I think association generally could be a by direction also let's try to understand it um what would be good example for us I'm just thinking let's take a look at this association versus aggregation is composition consider the differences and similarity between pets down and tails so aggregation and composition is clear like has a strong has a that is where aggregation comes into picture uh aggregation is I think weak as a and then uh company composition is a strong has a like for composition example is very basic but this association owners the association is this is the relationship between them right association okay if two classes in a model needs to communicate there must be a link between them right association can be line within this arrow it's just a use right so for example this is a right example uh where this movie class this show class it uses a movie right because it has reference to that ID that is a correct example where uh in one class just uses another class right the one instructor don't want to use has a in aggregation one class owns the subject of another class yes it can't exist without that right students that is correct this is also correct here also there is a relationship between student and class but here a single student can associate with multiple teacher every constructor has one or more students like in its class they might have different student just like it uses alright so we should not think much on this association it just a user relationship when there is a link between two things okay that that takes up our user relationships uh and this aggregation and compositions are important aggregation is aggregation and aggregation means weak has a here let's say there is a class and in that class or course is a right example right uh none of these are good examples let's say there is a IT department and then there are list of engineers right now engineers can engineer engineering can exist without company also right but in house they can't exist yeah that makes sense I think I've got the clarity on this composition is where this icon is used and aggregation there is a makes sense composition and aggregation right or let's implement this so this code I can share if anyone needs it uh new Java class U M L relationships so aggregation like aggregation is weak has a right now let's say class company it has a list of engineers right keep it simple just engineer only has a name or let's instead of using a name right let's call it skill because that's what matter and then you have this engineer and engineers but this is what now this company this engineer can exist without a company also right it can go to another company so that is the relationship basically here makes sense so this is our company it let's design it beneath this this is a company and then you have engineer right this engineer it has company has a list of engineers right I want to design that also like engineer list engineer uh let's design it this of better right and with this I will make this more so that it fits in but this engineer here he also has a skill that is string right now in this this arrowhead there should be more also I think this one yeah in normal X Gary there are more designs also but here it is not there so we can just assume that this is a like a like uh huh have to be cut out of this here I think there are more why is that you have more options right P F let's see if F does anything there if I think this version of scale he doesn't have that but you get the picture right this will be like a open ended one we'll just draw it this is the link this is like open right that is the uh uh simple one and this is relatively very simple. Composition is very simple so instead of company you have a house then you have rooms. Then you have this room array on the size. Let's say room and room what is the room would have name right like which room is living room trying room right now room doesn't make sense without a house right or without a hotel stuff like that so this is going to be your strong right so this is like a strong has a house has a room company has engineer weak has a right so we can implement this. So company has an has engineers engineers can exist without company as well. But on the other hand you have a class house private there is no of private and list classroom same name right. Now this is position those has and there is no point of without house. No separate existence basically. Hi Agri Shankar yes I thought of changing the thumbnail because it's been a while ah please let me know what do you think of the thumbnail. And then inheritance is basically is our relationship where one class is another class right like animal cat is an animal that's pretty straightforward. And then another one is this one realization or implementation where one or more classes implements the method like email notification implements it right. Or where that card we implemented it. That is like a realization right so we don't need to separately implement it that is already there for example in our rooms this thing is realization. This I mean one 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 let's just call these one right this is realization. And what is the short form this for realization? Implements is it what it is called. Implements. So this design would be little bit let me just copy this because someone was asking for a XGARI right. I'll just open a new incognito and then share the link for that one. Solid principles these are these are the next thing that we will look into. But I think for now these three could be are good enough. Okay. Here the XGARI link, let me cool we'll just walk through solid principles. There are different ones that SRP single responsibility should have only one so for example if you have email notification you should not put everything in that open to less cough and integration I'll be practicing these as well. Cool. With that said it was just a kickstart session of revision so that's why I could cover less but tomorrow probably we'll try to cover solid principles and then also some of the design patterns and then we'll get started on the problems. Hmm. So that's it for this stream guys. Have a nice day everyone, take care.